Thank you very much. I'd like to call this October twenty first, the meeting of the City of Monte Serrino Council to order. And before we get started, we have a council member who will be attending remotely. And as per rules, I'm going to ask her to state her reason for attending remotely. And then say congratulations to her.
Hello, everyone. I wish I could be there with you, but I'm attending this meeting remotely under just cause circumstances. And there is no one over the age of eighteen in the room with me.
Okay, thank you very much. And now I would like to have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Shannon?
Here.
Councilmember Mekichuk?
Present.
Councilmember Torren?
Here.
Vice Mayor McCallum?
Here.
Mayor Gray?
Here. Okay, let's stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Go back to your school days.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just for the record, Councilmember Mekichuk, my crossword puzzle said the National Anthem of Canada, and I got it right. Oh, well done. So. Okay. Moving on. I think we have a orders of the day item that will give any council member a chance to change the orders of the day. And seeing none, we're going to move on to announcements. Do any council members have any announcements that they would like to make? Okay, I would just like to make a quick one. At our last meeting, I mentioned that the Santa Clara County Library has implemented and started their Dolly Parton Imaginarium program. And in the first few days after it started, they already got ten thousand signups. So, and so this is the program, which is run by a foundation that Dolly Parton started, where children under five years old can get mailed a book every single month. And the children's book, who read every single month, and it's totally free. You don't have to give the book back or anything. They're not autographed by Dolly, unfortunately, but they are very, very good books, from what I understand.
God, children will be reading. How magnificent.
So presentations, we have a presentation from the Monte Serrino Police Services Presentation Report for January. Doesn't sound right. That's what it says. Welcome, Captain Alba. Come on up and present. Very, very anxious and ready to hear your report.
Oh, good. I was gonna say, I hope that you have it.
There it is.
Perfect. Hi, Councilmember Shannon. I, I will. Is her viewpoint here?
Yes.
Okay, let's just address her.
Yeah.
Her empty chair. You could just turn. Yeah. Second? Okay. Uh, you, are you able to, is that as big as it gets?
That's as big as it gets.
Okay. Everybody can see it? All right, so Rebecca Alvin, I am the Captain over Operations for the Las Gatos Monastery and Police Department. I was here last time discussing a different six-month period. Today, we're going to be talking about January through June of this year. I spoke to the chief earlier this evening and said, for the next one, can we get it as close as possible to the time period that we're talking about? Because it's always difficult to think back in time and not talk about the things that we're doing right now. So hopefully every time we'll get it closer and closer to the time period that we're actually talking about. But nonetheless, during the time period of January to June of this year, we took on three new police officers. Two of them were laterals from different agencies that decided to make this their home. And one of them was entry level, meaning that we sent him to the police academy. He's actually nearing completion of his training right now. I just saw his training officer before I came here. He's doing really well. So we're hoping that he'll be another full police officer real soon, probably in just a couple of weeks. Beyond that, we do have the community service officer interns, which are immensely helpful, especially during the big events that we have coming up. We did promote one sergeant and we hired one dispatcher. Okay, fiscal budget. And we'll just take a moment and say that I do remember feedback from last time that we wanted this presentation to be closer to what Las Gatos gets. And so this is very similar to the presentation that they got. And I did try and get some statistics for you. So along those lines, the DUI grant is the California CHP Cannabis Tax Fund Grant. We got two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. I can take no credit for it. It was Captain Tata who did all the hard work. And part of that money is going to cover for us is we're going to get two new patrol vehicles. It will pay for eight saturated patrol events for DUI specifically. And DUI training courses for multiple officers within our agency, as well as training one to be a drug recognition expert at DRE, which we actually have the application period open right now to see who's going to be selected for that. And that is very rigorous training. It's actually one of the harder ones. You have to take a lot of tests and memorize all kinds of numbers and so forth. And then that person becomes a subject matter expert that can testify in court and train other officers. The Las Gatos Monastery Police Foundation, who is amazing, and I think I've shared with you, it's not something that I experienced at my previous agency, has made contributions towards innovation in technology and equipment, supporting our department over this period of time. Some of the things that the contributions went to and have provided for us include ballistic vests, shields that are ballistic in nature, a culture of accountability training, which I had forgotten about when I was comparing this, and the chief reminded me that it was held on my birthday. So I do actually vividly remember spending that whole day in training, as well as virtual reality training system that allows us to do scenario training in virtual reality, which is incredible. And we're very, very fortunate and lucky to have. We also got a post grant for line-level supervisor and command staff team building and training, which we do every year. It's an opportunity for our line-level supervisors and our executive management to be able to get together. We have an outside facilitator, and of course, whatever the topic may be, it's a great opportunity for bonding, as well as, you know, professional development and really important conversations that we're able to have kind of as peers. Yeah.
What is post? What's the acronym?
Oh, yeah. Police Officer Standard and Training. So it's the California State kind of accreditation board for all police officers. So not to get too broad tangent, but there's this thing SB two, Senate Bill two, that came about maybe in the last year or two. And basically, if you do specify things wrong as a police officer, post as the accreditation board for the state can decide that they're going to take your certification away, and you don't get to be a police officer anywhere anymore. You have to do things that are really bad, obviously. Yeah, that happened. But they have a lot of power. It's kind of like our driver's license to people to become police officers. And if they take it away, you can't be bringing them. So they're a very significant group. And then the last one I went back and forth on talking about, because obviously it's a Las Gatos thing. But I do know that Diana asked about it when it happened, so I just thought I would mention it. In Las Gatos, we've been charging fees for response to alarms for businesses, but not for residential, which I'm not sure how much that relates to here, because there really is no commercial here. But it was something that during this time period was being looked at to amend the ordinance so that there would be a fee also to the residential side of alarm response. And again, I'm not sure that that even makes sense or relates for this community, but just in the interest of, you know, sharing kind of what our neighbors are doing, I thought that I would mention it. Okay, technology and research. So I'm not sure if you're all familiar with Axon. They're kind of a big company in our field. So one of the, these are all kind of things that we're looking at during this period of time, and most of them we're still working at today, honestly. One of the things was looking at the DFR, which is Drone as First Responder Program. Basically, it's a way to enhance emergency response times, help with de-escalation, cross-departmental use, emergency preparedness. So there was an agency in the North Bay, different county, that utilized this. Basically, they had somebody who was a neighbor dispute, and then one neighbor started shooting at the other neighbor. And they were able to deploy their drone that was able to fly over and see where the suspect neighbor was. He was actually laying in wait, and there were officers that were coming that he was intending on shooting when they came around the corner, because they had the drone. The drone operator was able to say, hey, stop. And they went around a different way, and they were able to neutralize the suspect. And thankfully, none of the officers got shot. But it was kind of a sobering moment for all of us to think, my God, if you didn't have that drone, we know exactly what would have happened. So I think, you know, historically, people think of drones as just silly toys or annoyances or something that kids use. But law enforcement more and more is finding that it can be a really impactful tool when used correctly. And that, you know, was a horrible, but also really good example. So that's something that we were and are looking at. A lot of acronyms on this one. So RTCC is Real-Time Crime Center. A lot of these things kind of go hand in hand. A real-time crime center is kind of a room like this, where you would have like TV screens up, and you could see everything. So you could see in real time, how the name sounds. You could see your drone footage. You could see, you know, dispatch. You could see all the incidents that were going on. You could probably see like a map, maybe with pinpoints where all the officers were. It's, as the name sounds, it's kind of a it's a real-time crime center. So you can kind of see everything all in one place. Expanding public-private partnerships. This speaks to, we have been looking a lot at Burkata recently, which I learned from Diana, that apparently you have on this building. And as we learn more about it, we're kind of getting more excited about it, because there's a number of places in town that have it. And it being cameras. The Fisher Middle School has it in the school district. Over the next five years, I understand, is planning on implementing cameras at all the elementary schools, including Dave's Avenue. The terraces in Las Gatos also have the same cameras. You have them here, and there's several other places that we're now learning all have these Burkata cameras. And the really cool thing about it is, is that we can, if the people with the camera like to share, we can share, you know, those cameras. So if, for instance, God forbid, something were happening here, we would be able to, and we already decided to share, we would be able to see those cameras, and we would be able to see in real time what was going on before officers even got here, which could give us, you know, valuable information, both in terms of, you know, those calls where, you know, we get there and we're a minute too late, and the person's already left. Yeah.
So is it, when they, when you decide to share it, isn't, wouldn't it be almost like requirement for schools and the police and some of the other organizations? Being strongly encouraged?
Strongly encouraged. We would love to. I mean, you know, your cameras are your cameras. So if, if for whatever reason you didn't want to share with us, that would be your prerogative. But, you know.
I think you not want to do it.
I certainly think there's value in it. But, you know, again, you know, some of these entities I mentioned are private entities. I suspect everybody, or the ones that I mentioned, would probably want to. But I made a introductory, introductory presentation to the Chamber of Commerce in Las Gatos a couple of weeks ago, talking to the downtown businesses about the same idea. And so, you know, having eyes in the downtown business district, especially coming into the holiday season, would be incredible. We are currently demoing a trailer that has several of the cameras on it. Company's been really good to work with and just said, here, try it, see if it works for you. So we are planning on utilizing that on Halloween, as well as for the Christmas parade, because of all the different things that it can do. Also, you know, being able to, like for the Christmas parade, for instance, because the technology is so smart now, you know. Unfortunately, sometimes people lose their kids at these things. And so whereas, you know, traditionally, everybody's looking for little Timmy with a red shirt and jeans, and you know, it takes however long it takes. Now, if we had, in this future world, you know, these cameras everywhere, we could put in, you know, the description of the clothing, and the cameras would show us everybody with that clothing description. We could find Timmy in two minutes. So especially not only as a police officer, but as a parent, that alone kind of sold me on it. But the capabilities are, are very exciting. Bless you. So that is something that we were and still are looking at, in terms of technology that we're interested in the future. And again, it's that public-private partnership, where it's not just us. There's opportunity for business owners, schools, you know, all kinds of different people to utilize it, so we can all work together. The other obvious reason for all of this technology is the idea of leveraging it for major events that are coming soon. Obviously, like the Super Bowl. We can't even imagine how many people that's gonna bring. And that would be another tool in our arsenal that, you know, would be very beneficial. Yeah, I think we talked about those. Okay, calls for service. Maybe that? There it is. Okay, so these are the same charts that we used for Las Gatos for their presentation. The response times, I couldn't break out by jurisdiction, because we don't respond more or less quickly to want to Serrino than we do to Las Gatos. These are our response times, our response times overall. So let's see. The, the goals obviously are in green. And twenty twenty-five is in red. So for priority one calls, which are the most critical, like the threat to life, the really bad ones, we're actually getting there faster than we were this same reporting period last year, which is great. Priority two, which are still critical, but maybe without like the immediate threat to life, very, very close to the same. And priority three, same. And priority three are things that maybe don't have a significant level of danger. They're more of a routine call. And then looking at the metrics between twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five for dispatch calls, it looks like we're actually quite similar relative to the same reporting period last year. Traffic enforcement? Okay. Um, so again, these are statistics that represent both jurisdictions. However, I did dig into them. So for the traffic stops, fifty-six of the about one thousand eight hundred were in Montezarino, with twenty-six of those resulting in a citation, and that citation represented either from a written warning up to a misdemeanor arrest. And then for the documented reports, fifty-one of the about two thousand or so. Oh, I'm sorry. Let me do it again. Fifty-one of the twenty twenty-five, which was about a thousand, were in Montezarino. And in looking at the numbers, you know, one thing that strikes me, obviously, the numbers are quite smaller. However, Monte Serrino is much smaller than Las Gatos. And you don't have a commercial area, which is kind of a target-rich environment for a lot of these things to happen. And so I do want to assure that it's not a disparity in patrol efforts or productivity or anything like that. It's just, I think, two different, somewhat different demographics that account for those, the disparity in those numbers. Community policing? Okay. Are we still on?
Yes, you are.
Okay.
We did this last time.
I know. It won't let me mute.
It didn't last time either. It doesn't work.
Doesn't.
Good.
All right. I just wanted to see the presentation better.
Okay. Um, so Police Foundation, I think that we already talked about in previous slides. Service club meetings would be Lions and Rotary in Kiwanis. We presented at meetings for each of those organizations. And some of the things that we talked about, that some people might not be aware of, is the fact that we provide welcome packets to new residents, both in Las Gatos and Montezarino. Talked about the vacation checks that we do. The Special Needs Awareness Program, which, if you're not familiar, is a voluntary and confidential program that provides us as first responders with information about individuals that have special needs, whether that be autism or dementia or anything like that. So that we have, again, it's about front-loading information, so that we know if we're going to a particular address, what we may be dealing with, and have a better chance to deal with it appropriately. The Special Obvious Torch Run, that was in June, so it just, just made the cutoff of this reporting period. It starts at the Keto Fire Station and ends at the Say Limits with Campbell Winchester. I did not do it this year. I was on vacation, but I did do it the first year. I'm not going to say that I was the first one in line, but I did successfully do the run, and that felt, that felt good to me. The bike rodeo is on here. However, I think that that might have been a typo, because that's actually in September. So I got to something else that we do in town that is in this reportable period, which was the picture, their impromptu wiffle ball at Dave's Avenue School with the the younger grades. So I trade you one community event for another. The Community Police Academy successfully completed its third offering. It was in March to April. And I believe, were you in the first one?
I was in the first one, and I recommended to everybody. It was fabulous.
Yeah. Which further supports the fact that we have had Montezarino residents in every one of these that we've had so far, including this one that we just had. And it's a great introduction to showing everybody everything that we do, which may or may not be what they think that we do, from, you know, patrol operations, de-escalation, investigations, traffic enforcement, all the variety of things that we do in the community, as well as the role of technology in modern policing. And the next one is probably going to be in spring of next year, only because, pushed up because of FIFA and the World Cup. And so FIFA and the World Cup. FIFA and the Super Bowl, because we imagine those are going to take a lot of our resources.
My concern is, when she retires, who's going to replace Kat as the drunk driver?
I mean, I don't think that's replaceable. I've seen that firsthand. It was, I think I was crying. I was laughing so hard. Challenge accepted. We have a lot of young enthusiastic officers that I'm sure would do a good job. But yeah, that, that's not replaceable. And for those of you that haven't seen, Sergeant Mann does a really, really good impression of a belligerent drunk that we use during our scenario training for the Community Police Academy. Quite funny. We did safety presentations regarding e-bikes, both for parents and students during school hours and after. That was in collaboration with the schools. And there's going to be more to come on that come November.
A parent contacted me. Apparently, some e-bikes require a driver's license and some don't. And I'm not sure that we've gotten the word out, because this mother didn't know about it, and her son didn't. And it was all news to me, because I remember talking to Bill Hoyt before he retired about how many terrible accidents will we need before we require licensing? So maybe there is something that could go through the schools where they really say, you know, I don't know if it's a class three as opposed to a class one or two, you need a license. You know, you have to be what, sixteen to need a license in order to ride that kind of e-bike?
Yeah. So I mean, that is such a good idea that we actually already did that. We provided pamphlets to all the schools. And my understanding is that some were more readily on board with providing them than others. So I can certainly speak to, I'm assuming you mean Dave's Avenue School.
Well, no, the, the, maybe it was because this young man's a mitty.
Oh, well, I can't really speak to that.
Well, but, but he was, he got the ticket from Los Gatos Monte Serrino.
We do have the information on our website. After we put the pamphlets out, I made sure that we updated it to our website, so it is there. And I know that we have shared on social media. Again, we, we share the pamphlets with all of our local Montezarino and Las Gatos schools. So.
If you send it to me, I will make sure that both Biddy and Arker in St. Francis all get it, because this young man and his mother were, were not aware of it.
Yeah. Yeah. And we can definitely talk more about it afterwards, because I think it is a super important
I think it's
topic.
You see some of these kids riding double on Dave's Avenue or over Santa Cruz, and it's ridden. I'm afraid there are going to be some serious injuries.
Fast. Yeah, I mean, there's, there's so many different aspects to why the e-bike issue is what it is. A combination, I think, of parents maybe not realizing what they're giving their kids, and just wanting to make their kids happy. Kids being kids and not having the responsibility necessarily to operate these things safely. Kids being on some of the ones that are more like motorcycles, honestly, that probably shouldn't be on them in the first place. And then even the ones that are operating them safely, sometimes cars don't see them, and then, you know, they're victims, and they didn't really even do anything wrong. So there's just, there's so many, and this is why this is such a significant issue. But we're, we're really truly hoping for some legislation help from the state, as well as maybe some local changes. And like I said, stay tuned. Hopefully soon. I'll, I'll definitely share that information.
Well, in terms of legislative changes, if, you know, Burton goes to the, you know, the five West Valley cities for the monthly meeting, if there's something where maybe the five West Valley cities could add their voice, it's something that they can bring up and see what the other four mayors think and the other four city councils. Because when I see these kids, part of it was my last job, I was general counsel to a company that sold Harley-Davidson motorcycles. And I used to have to defend nationwide litigation, where people would be rolled into court missing body parts. So I I think it's a real concern.
No, it absolutely is. And again, I would be more than happy to talk more about it afterwards, or you know, during business hours, and I can get your own information, and we can talk more about it. I mean, leveraging our resources, we all want the same thing. We want these kids to be safer.
Absolutely.
And, you know, even from the driver's standpoint, you know, if they don't see them, and, you know, then the driver of the vehicle is victim, a victim as much as anything else. Because it's not like anybody wants to hit a child. So there's definitely work to be done. I'm certainly happy to partner on it. Let's see, where were we? Um, school presentations. We hosted two neighborhood watch meetings in Montezarino. One was Constitution Avenue, and one was in the Lawren Kana neighborhood during this reportable period of time. CERT got seven new members that are Montezarino residents. They graduated from the CERT Academy, which is six weeks, and taught by our fire department. And they were introduced to the Montezarino CERT leads, so that they could hit the ground running. We do have, of course, two incident command posts in town, one being Dave's Avenue School and the other being right here. But I understand there's still some work to be done to get it to where it needs to be. And of course, there's always a focus on recruitment. Okay. Are you doing the, like, you're doing it. You're really doing a great job. Um, Meliora, I, is this something that was shared with you at the time that we were, no? Okay. So Meliora, as it says, is public safety consulting. We actually, it was funny, because at my last job, we went through the same process. And then I left, and I came here, and we were right at the beginning of it. And because you have to do a lot of research and get all kinds of information for them to be able to kind of do their analysis. And, and so I got double, double the work inadvertently. But they're a fantastic group, mostly retired police chiefs, and they deep-dived into every aspect of how we do what we do. And they came up with a lot of recommendations, about a hundred and thirty of them, in fact, in about a couple hundred-page report. And they came down to five themes, which you can see on the screen to my left. During the period of January to June of this year, fourteen of the recommendations were previously in progress, were addressed. Eleven of them were designated as short-term, within the next three to six months, would be completed. And then four were long-term recommendations that had already been resolved. And then numerous items were considered. So basically, we looked at the a hundred and thirty points, because that's a lot. And we kind of said, you know, what are the small bites? What are the big bites? What are the huge meals? And figured out what we could kind of knock out. And figured out what we could kind of knock out uh quickly uh and easily, what things we could. Do but would take a little more work and what things were maybe we would like to do them, but it's gonna take some time. Uh one of the most consequential recommendations uh by the assessment was an ask for consolidation of our two buildings. Which we all wholeheartedly agree with, those of us that work there. Um my uh chief uh was at my building on Los Gatos Boulevard today. It was amazing to be able to just. Walk one office over and ask for questions as opposed to calling her on the phone or either having to drive. Uh you know, downtown to her headquarters building, so. Um beyond just myself, this means uh it would be great to all be in one building for um. Unity, communication, you know, effectiveness, um time saved for meetings. We can just walk. In the office next door as opposed to having to deal with high school traffic. Uh so many, many reasons uh why that would be great. Um and so there was a recommendation for a comprehensive space needs assessment uh to explore the operational logistical and financial implications. Of consolidating as well as looking at whether we could. Um repurpose the existing building and space that we're in, or whether it just isn't gonna work for us and whether we're gonna have to go somewhere else, so. Um that was something that we were discussing in this period of time. The report came in, I believe, maybe end of November twenty-four. And then we really started like digging into it um in in the beginning of the year. Um and uh not in this reportable period, of course, but uh the company just started doing that assessment. Um and we were trying to get our dates together literally today to have the first meeting with them, so. Um while I know it's not going to be a uh. A immediate process, um I am super excited at least that we're starting that that journey. Yeah, I think that's enough about Meliora. Next one?
Um is that report public or is it private?
Um I wanna say it's public. I think it lives somewhere on the Los Gatos website. I could probably fund you a link, not right now, but. Yeah.
And I, on that point regarding the consolidation, Chris Constantine has to be all over that because.
Like wanting to do it or not wanting to do it?
No, wa- wanting to do it because I gotta believe that there's some dollars to be saved in there.
I mean, I think that's what the assessment, the the spatial assessment is gonna weed out. So you know, even in a couple of weeks, I could probably have a more informed answer for you. Um I suspect it would. I mean, there there's gonna be. You know, time saved and time is money. Um you know, I I just think functionally, I I was very surprised when I came here. Uh and learned that we had two buildings for such a small. Uh jurisdictional area, obviously coming from a sheriff's office, I was very familiar with having multiple places, um but I didn't imagine that we would have that here. Um and especially because we have had so much really great hiring the last couple of years. You know, we have the dispatchers and the records people, the chief and the other captain downtown in their building, and then operations and detectives um. Uh you know, and myself. And really all the sergeants, uh you know, on Los Gatos Boulevard. And so th- there isn't that uh like passing in the halls that you would want for the new people to be comfortable, uh as comfortable as they could be. Uh you know, with the chief, with the other captain, because maybe they don't see them that often. Um they do the best that they can, but it it definitely is a novelty having the chief uh in one of the offices today. Everybody was so excited. Uh just to have her uh have her there. Um uh so eh I I think. Uh there's a million reasons why, you know, being in one building makes sense. Um it's it's just a matter of will it be the building that we're in making it better? Or does it not have the bandwidth to become something that not only will be good now, but into the future as we as well? Uh but he is supportive of it.
Always heard that if you wanna see the police, you go to s- town hall. If the police wanna see you. That's when you're taken to the operations side.
I I could see that. That's funny. Uh perhaps, but uh I mean, we do, we have. Um what, we have a lobby, uh but uh it's locked. You can only get in if if dispatch lets you in. I mean, even then, you know, you're in a room and you're waiting and hopefully somebody's there to meet you immediately, but if not, you may be, you know, waiting and we talk about just that. You know, community engagement that we're always striving for. I know. You know, I personally, when I walk into a police department, would like to see, you know, somebody there uh to greet me. Um whether it just be for, you know, somebody administrative or because it's the worst day of my life or the best day of my life, you know, I'd like to see somebody when I get there and not have to hit a button. And and talk to somebody that, for all I know, it could be anywhere. It turns out it's only a couple of miles down the road, but. I do think, uh I can't speak for you and for Los Gatos, but my opinion, I think that's what we all want is that engagement in in person.
Community police.
Yeah, so um I I'm I'm really hopeful that this assessment is the first really big step in in getting us there, so. Uh hopefully before I retire. That that's my hope is that I actually get to see it. Um I will say that uh myself and a newly promoted Captain Bor Mayo. Uh as Captain Todd will be retiring at the end of this year, uh he's there cross-training right now. Uh the two of us are going to be the uh police department representatives working in public works uh on this project. Which I'm very excited about because, you know, I think that we bring two different sides to the same coin. Newly promoted Captain Bor Mayo, who was Sergeant Bor Mayo for many, many years. Uh started his career here, and so he knows, he was here for when the original police operations building was. Uh was, I guess, retrofitted. Um and has seen the progression through the years. Obviously, I came from an outside agency. So while I haven't seen the history of how maybe this building was thought to be really good at the time and maybe wasn't. Um I have kind of the outside perspective of being able to come in and say. This doesn't work and you don't see it because you've only ever known it this way. Um or you know, things that I've seen the other places that I've worked. And so I think that we have two complimentary perspectives. And that working together to represent the police department's interests through this process, um I think probably is a really good thing. I'm very excited about. Um I screenshotted the transparency portal for uh our Flock. Uh transparency page, um ignore the fact that it's dated Tuesday. That was just when I took the screenshot, but if you go online right now, it would be dated today. Um and rather than sitting here and explaining to you what Flock does, because I know that we've spent a long time talking about Flock and I don't have to tell you what it is. Um I thought it it was more uh helpful to include the transparency portal. You can't see it on here, but uh I also did include like the uh the URL if you wanted to go there. And um if not, you can just literally Google Montesereno Flock Transparency and it's the first uh. Uh return and you click on it and it'll look just like this. Um and it is exactly what it says it is. It's a transparency portal, so you can see the numbers uh behind the technology that we all worked so hard to get. Um and it's updated quite regularly, so uh. For those of you that are not aware that it exists, I wanted to at least mention it. And I don't know if anybody's watching in the community, but I wanted them to know too, because I think it's a great resource. Um especially for people that maybe don't fully understand uh what its uses are. I like that a lot. And then I couldn't give you uh an example of. Sorry, I couldn't give you a example of like a big uh. Montesereno flock camera win, because in this period of time, we didn't really have them up and going yet. Um but um. I did in a residential burglary that a Los Gatos uh lock camera uh. Was used in, and so I felt like that was the closest thing I could get to do a flock success story for this reportable period of time. Uh there was a residential burglary, the uh homeowner was away, as often is the case with the ones that we get here. A substantial amount of jewelry was stolen and a neighbor's security camera uh captured uh video of the incident. Suspect and suspect vehicle. So we have put in that information in the flock system and using uh one of the town of Los Gatos flock cameras. Um we were able to identify a suspect. And we made a track flyer, which is kind of a flyer that talks about this is what happened, this is who we're looking for and has a picture. And um we distributed that. And uh shortly thereafter, the Santa Clara County Sheriff's Office had a burglary in Morgan Hill with the same suspect vehicle. Um just a few days after the one that had happened here. The suspect vehicle was stopped a few days after that in Monterey County. And the drivers identified with jewelry from both burglaries uh located in the vehicle. Um and then we did a bunch of more investigative stuff and an arrest warrant was issued. Um and the individual was linked to a number of burglaries all over the county and Monterey County. Um so again, you know, it's it's these wins that we get with these flock cameras, and I have no doubt that. In the next reportable period, I'll have one using uh the the cameras that we have installed here. A good one, a good one. Maybe I would capture a suspect for another jurors.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think we now have implemented all of our cameras, except the mobile one is.
No, you, we have that one.
You've got that one. So so our seventeen, was it?
Nineteen, I think.
Nineteen?
I think it was nineteen.
They're all operational now, which is, this reporting period was to the end of June, right?
Yes, yeah. So that's why I'm the next one. Hopefully, we'll have a benign, happy uh example of of what one of those cameras has done to keep the community safer. Um.
Well, perhaps it's a deterrent and maybe we won't have a story because we're maybe maybe not gonna have burglaries. People who want to come to our community.
Yes, true, but again, it can be, I mean, yes, I'm just gonna leave it a yes, but it can be used for more than just burglaries. It can be used for all kinds of things if we're looking for. I don't even wanna say, but uh there there's a lot of things aside from burglary, terrible things, uh that if we were looking for somebody. Uh that it could be helpful to have that, uh whether it be something that occurred in this jurisdiction. Or another, because I don't have to tell you that a lot of people from other parts of the Bay Area, sometimes east or north. Um come here to do things here and they're not from here, they're from elsewhere. Um and and so oftentimes, you know, we uh find people that other jurisdictions are looking for that may be coming here to. Uh do nefarious activities, so. But yes, I like your thinking. I'm with you on that. Hopefully next time, no stories. That's the goal. Okay, communications, infrastructure, modernization. Actually, I had to talk to my uh partner captain about this because this is his side of the house. Uh to understand more about it. Uh next generation nine-one-one will revamp our dispatch infrastructure to modernize with current technology. Uh I use fiber optic cables, a big uh project for uh the other side of the house. Um staffing, uh we are slated for thirty-nine full staff. Uh during this reportable period, we had thirty-four with five vacancies, but we're actively recruiting both then and now. Uh with one in the academy uh due to graduate in March, so obviously now we're talking about now, because it would be this coming March. Uh and we anticipate two more. Hopefully to start the police academy before the end of the year. I know they have a couple of people in the pipeline uh real, real close. So that is very exciting news. Full staffing gives us the opportunity to do all the uh, I don't wanna say fun things, but especially for young officers. The ability to um test for specialties, perhaps participate in task forces and. Go to uh additional training because we're not as concerned about backfilling them uh is very enticing, so cannot wait to get those numbers up. Uh as pictured top left, Officer Delia's current canine partner was selected during this time period. Uh she came to join us at the end of June, which is fortuitous because the uh. Individual that provided the financial backing to get said dog uh decided that she would be named Junior. And she is officially known as Junie for short. Uh so Junior Junie is with us now. She has since successfully completed canine explosive detection school. And she will embark on canine tracking school in the next year, so she is not a bite dog. She is a very sweet. Uh lovable uh tracking and uh EOD dog. That is her function. And she's very good in the community as well. Uh she just came back to work because she had her um. A delicate way to say it, she was fixed. Uh so she just came back and she's doing very well, which is exciting, because as long as dog owners are, the uh handler was very nervous about the procedure, but it went just fine. Um let's see, oh, and just a few months outside of this reporting period, uh we did select a motor officer. Who has since completed uh motor school. And we hope to be able to select an additional motor officer in the coming year, but I do know that traffic is something that is near and dear to everybody's hearts. And so keep an eye out for our new uh motor officer buzzing around to getting everybody, because he's very excited about the job.
I saw him today on the highway tonight.
There you go. Yeah, no, he's the.
But I saw him before he saw me.
He's really liking it. I'm sure that you were driving this speed when I'm doing nothing legal, nothing. Yes. Um.
Were you in a Porsche? I uh was, actually.
Uh we had two report of the vehicle collisions in this period of time. Uh I'm not, I hope you can read it from there. Uh one was a hit and run and one was an unsafe turning movement. Um I did look at uh both of them. There was really nothing exciting to share about either of them, but those did occur. Um. I thought it may be helpful, uh because I feel like this came up last time. Um I did look in the same uh reportable period. We had five residential burglaries uh that occurred, uh one in January, two in three. One, two, three, four, five. Uh one in January, three in April and one in June. Um so that's how many we had during that time period. Um and then um again. Something that I just thought would be of interest, also because I mentioned the uh DUI grant. Um is I looked at the reportable uh period of times, see how many DUIs we had in town, uh and I located three. Uh that are all interesting for different reasons. Uh the first one was in January. It was Highway Nine in Ridgecrest at seven o'clock in the morning. Uh and the individual was uh, we'll say asleep uh in their vehicle. And already had a suspended license for DUI previously. Uh and so that person was arrested. Uh the next one was in May, uh just down the street, Highway Nine and Viewfield Road. Uh observed swerving into the bike lane though, it was two AM, so there was probably no bikes in the bike lane, but still not something that we wanna see. Uh all over the road, I believe, was how it was described, and that individual was also drunk. Um this last one I checked with the chief before I shared because I said, um I think it's important to share, but I don't wanna. Shock anybody. Um and she said that uh she thought it was worth sharing, so. Uh this one was in May and it was at Dave's Avenue School and uh a a parent. Was observed in the vicinity of the school. Uh don't wanna out anybody's ages, but carrying a. Child that was of an age that it would need to be carried and was supposedly drinking uh hard liquor of some kind. And by the time the officers got there and pulled over the uh individual, uh it had already blown through a stop sign. And uh was found in his car uh with two young children, both his. Uh so he failed the uh sobriety test. Mom was called, thank God, uh and took the kids who were both young and younger. Um and that, of course, became a CPS referral, and I share this just to say that. You know, I think a lot of us, hmm, not me, but sometimes people in the community, you know, they just think of like. DUIs is expensive and I was just out having a good time and maybe I had one too many, but I I think it's important to realize that. It's not that. Uh it's people like the first one that I shared that had already had a suspended driver's license for DUIs. Is out doing it again. I mean, how drunk would you have to be to be passed out at seven o'clock in the morning? Um. Or this individual uh that, you know, is putting the kids' lives at risk. Um I mean, I I can't even imagine the thought process. Uh so I think the value of. Uh the value of this grant is far beyond just the monetary value. Um I think it's going to truly allow us to keep the community safer. Um and get people off the road that really have no business being there, so. I definitely did wanna share those stories because again, they did happen in Montesereno. Um and I just, I I think it's important to share because. Even though, you know, we're Montesereno, we're a little bit sleepy and we're safe and. And all that, we we still have unfortunately crimes that don't feel good to happen here and that that's why you have us here, so I did wanna share that. And with that, we're at the end of my presentation, so. As much as I uh am anxious to say, do we have any questions?
Sure you wanna see it. Uh any questions for Captain Alba?
Just thanks for very terrific reporting, Captain.
No, Lisa.
I have a quick question, just out of curiosity. You mentioned Junie, the dog, and that special things that she is able to do. Do different police forces in the area share their canines at all if they have canines that are. Trained in something specific that maybe another jurisdiction needs?
That is a great question. Uh I was gonna say yes and no, but the answer is really just yes. Uh through through mutual aid uh agreements, uh we have the ability to share all kinds of resources, canines being one of them. Uh and so uh being a female, I can tell you, I spent a lot of years on nights and. There were times that I would go to other jurisdictions because maybe there was a female prisoner and there was no women working in a particular jurisdiction. They needed to be dispossessed. As a former canine handler, I was fortunate enough to go all over the place with my dog, uh for the exact same reason. My dog was narcotics trained. Um and uh so I. So I got to go all over and, you know, snipper drugs, the laws were a little different back then, so there was more I could use my dog for at the time, but. Uh, yes, uh, Judy could potentially be called to outside jurisdictions, uh, for the skill set that she possesses. Uh, tracking is something that is a very useful skill that not all dogs have. Um, and the EOD aspects, uh, of course, with uh, the big events, national, international events that are coming up. Uh, also is gonna be an invaluable skill, uh, both uh, for here and perhaps, um, you know, other local events. Also, I mean, I didn't go through it here last time, uh, well, obviously the World Cup, I would not have been here, but uh, for the Super Bowl last time. Um, we don't know who's gonna come to our communities, you know, especially with Airbnb and so forth, like we can begin to imagine. Who may wanna stay here, uh, and and so, you know, I think there's gonna be a huge uh, call for. All kinds of resources and duties that may be definitely utilized, that's a great question.
Thank you.
Okay, um, anybody else? I asked my questions as you were going through, uh, thank you very much for the presentation and uh. And and for the stories, it would be a lot seated.
Absolutely, I I feel like it makes kind of some maybe otherwise less exciting numbers a little bit more relatable. I know, um, for me personally, I I find stories make things more memorable, so, um, that was my thought. Was hoping I kinda connect with you all on a human to human level and make this feel less sterile, so thank you.
And and I will say that I took Leadership Loscatos, I think in twenty thirteen or twenty fourteen. And Greg was, and Chris were in both in that class.
Oh, wow, well, I'm I'm in it this year, I missed the very first one because I was at a conference, but. Um, I'm excited to go to the second one, I think, especially being somebody that came from an outside agency, it'll be a great way, outside community, I should say. Great way to meet all kinds of people, uh, around, uh, town and city that I wouldn't otherwise meet, so I'm very excited about it.
And I did my ride along back then.
Well, yeah, I gotta do another one, but it's done one, wow.
We can definitely facilitate the first one.
Yeah, well, just be aware when you're on the ride along, you're expected to have had the coffee.
I actually saw a very funny meme online the other day, uh, it was from a different agency in this uh, county. Uh, that said, uh, be advised, parents, any children uh, observed in uh, police uniforms this Halloween will be expected to pick up overtime shifts. That was pretty funny.
I thought you were gonna say pick up trash.
I mean, that would work too, but I I applauded the uh, outside of the box thinking for staff.
Yeah. Well, I do have not so much questions, but I guess topics.
Sure.
That maybe can be addressed at a future presentation, I don't wanna put you on the spot with a whole bunch of answers right now, but. I have been following flock camera reports about a lot of abuses that have been in the system. And I know that there are some concerns with some of our residents here. And I don't think that we should be concerned about any of our personal information in Los Gatos or Monteserino. But I think it would be good to be in front of this and to let the residents of both of our cities know. The policies and procedures that are in place to ensure that, um, there is. Just, just above, above suspicion that anything, um. Wrong is being done with the data from these flock cameras. And um, I also think that it would be good to let the residents know that, um. Different agencies that may wanna use the data and where they've used it in other cities. Um, what the policy is, like if if Customs and Borders Patrol says, hey, I need all the flock data from Monteserino. Are they gonna be able to get it?
So, I mean, I can speak to all that, it's not on the spot, I can speak to all that right now, um, uh, the, start with the end. The transparency portal, uh, that we showed earlier, uh, there's a link to our policy on there that anybody can read the entirety of it. Um, included in that policy, um, it it does state what we will or will not use the information for, um. I believe, I don't know exactly which uh, instances you're referring to, but most of the ones that I've seen have been, um, other states, um.
And I and I will say, these do not involve anybody in Santa Clara County, they are, this is a nationwide, I've been. Seeing a lot of, well, and actually down in Southern California too, down at Riverside.
So. You're talking about ICE?
No, 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 we're talking about police officers, one of them wanted to track his ex-girlfriend and.
Oh, okay.
He was using flock to go out and do that.
Uh, my guess was he was arrested.
Yeah, they were, they they were.
So, that that is part of the uh, hmm, safeguards that we have. Uh, is one, uh, we would hope that everybody's of reproach, um. I'm not gonna say that every police officer everywhere is perfect because we are human beings. Um, and that is why we have policies and that's why we have laws, unfortunately, from time to time, we do see members of law enforcement that. Uh, step on the wrong side of the line and end up joining sometimes the inmates that uh, they're responsible for taking care of, so. I will say the large majority of law enforcement, I do believe, got into this job for the right reasons and it continues to do it for the right reasons. Um, you know, it's something that you're called to do because you have a pretty clear sense of right and wrong.
Yeah.
That having been said, um, again, we do have the policy available online, uh, it is, uh, being here in California. Uh, from the State Attorney General's Office, uh, direction was provided for all law enforcement in the state. Uh, not may, not can, it shall, you shall not share, uh, information that will result in uh, immigration. Or has anything to do with immigration, um, shall not be used, um, yeah. Hmm, in conjunction with anything to do with enforcing abortion laws, um. Basically, uh, it is the rule of the land for the state, uh, and as well as our internal policies, so double. Uh, that we should only be using it for the reasons that we're using it for, uh, which are investigative in nature for our investigations. Um, our department only, um, shares, uh, with other cities in this county. Uh, we don't share with uh, federal agencies, we don't share with even other agencies outside Santa Clara County. Um, and so as much as I can say, people should be rest assured, because I understand they may not know me, you know. Um, I would say rest assured, uh, that we have many, many statutes and guidelines and policies and laws. Uh, that are telling us exactly how this technology should be used, which is the right way, the proper way and the way that we all believe it should be used. Um, and if and when, like that individual that you mentioned, uh, somebody uses it for nefarious activity. Uh, then they will be prosecuted, as they should be, uh, because if you're wearing the uniform and you're doing something to discredit it. You're no longer a police officer, you're a criminal, um, and and so that's all I can say is that I believe everybody that we work with. Is above reproach in terms of their ethics, uh, we would never stand for that happening, I have no reason to think anybody would abuse it. And if for some reason that did happen, they would not be employed here much longer.
Okay, and is there any concern regarding the number of lawsuits that are going on around the country? And I don't know if anybody is keeping, is tracking that in in Los Gatos, but. There's been a lot of um, pushback by places like the Institute of Justice, the ACLU. Um, I'm personally pleased that the governor vetoed a law that was going to require purchase of. Databases that are created by products like Flock, so it looks like we are pretty good here, but.
I mean.
But and and again.
I would defeat the attorney in the room, but people are going to always sue, you know, I mean, uh, people are always gonna make. Uh, lawsuits, doesn't mean that they're necessarily gonna win the lawsuits, um, I know the ACLU is not. I don't work for them, of course, but they're not big fans of of this, they they don't love this technology, um, and that is, that is their right. Uh, but, um, uh, I think we just have to kind of wait and see how those lawsuits play out. Not concerned about them, uh, this kind of technology is in, I I couldn't even guess how many cities in the in the. State and the country, uh, and so I think if you compare the number of jurisdictions that are using this technology with the. Similarly minute number of lawsuits, I I don't even think it it's close, so I'm really not worried about it.
Okay, very good, um, and then the other topic, um, that I, it's just been, this is what happens when I watch news too much. So technically, our area is is within a hundred miles of the border. And I've been reading a lot of reports about how custom CB, CBP.
Well, you're talking about what, what border are we within a hundred miles of?
We're within a hundred miles of the border of the United States. And there's a hundred mile.
Do you mean with the ocean?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that puts us on the border and it basically gives custom and border protection, our blocks to come through any area that they want now. And pretty much do whatever they want, and um, I think it's concerning just seeing the kind of things that were going on in Chicago. Because that lake counted as a border for them, and they've just been doing some, you know, things that I don't think are right. And I don't know if um, if anybody's thought about this at all and and um. And I'm not saying that we should not support them, but I'm just saying that I think that they've been overstepping their authority in a lot of cases, so.
Can you share an example of what you're referring to?
Sure, I can talk about some of the stories I've been reading coming out of Chicago where uh, CBP agents have been arresting. Uh, people just based on racial profiling, including a number of Americans, a number of them have been injured. Because of the type of arrest techniques that they were using, and uh, there's been a lot of tear gassing going on for crowds, there's been. Uh, harassment of reporters and just, you know, the general, we're going to kinda. Do whatever we wanna do, this is our town.
Yeah, but Burton, I have to interrupt, I don't, that's absolutely true, but I don't see. How that impacts the Los Gatos.
No, 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 I was just asking, is there any concern that these type of activities are coming into our area? Cause I mean, everything from San Francisco all the way down to Monterey is really fair game, and we've already heard. The the president saying that, you know, San Francisco's next on my list.
Yeah, but I don't understand your.
Oh, no, I'm just kind of, like I said, it's not a question, it's more of. Okay, well, then that's it, I just wanted to express my concerns.
I think we all have the same concerns, but thi- this is not the forum where we can do.
No, I'm not, it was just, it was just, I'm expressing a concern and I, and I I just hope that we're being prepared for it, that's really what I'm trying to say. Um, and then the last thing that I wanted to just talk about is, uh, there have been a number of laws passed in twenty twenty five. Regarding e-bikes in terms of the number of wattage, the automatic cutoffs that should be put in. And if I ever wanna get a conversation started, I, I just have to mention, did you see that e-bike on Winchester the other day? Boom, for the next thirty minutes, we're talking about every single e-bike. Incident that that's occurred in, and so it is a big issue with residents, and I know it's been a, a big issue with some of the. Uh, sideshows that we've seen on on South Santa Cruz, but um. Is the PD taking a look at when they really wanna start enforcing these, because they've been in effect for over six months now?
Yeah, I mean, again, just like any newish technology, not saying e-bikes are new new, but relatively new. Um, you know, the the law has to catch up with the technology, uh, so.
Pretty, it's pretty explicit now what they're, what they are allowing and not allowing.
Right, so what I was gonna say is that, um, again, as I mentioned in the presentation, I believe in November, I'm speaking with the teeth, there's gonna be some significant. Uh, strides on that front, uh, that will be, um, I guess shared, um, because. It, while it seems like a simple issue, um, there are so many aspects to it that are not simple, like for example, when. Um, towing, uh, some of these, uh, e-bikes, well, they're not registered. And the way that you get your vehicle out of tow is that you would show some kind of, you know, registration or or legal. Um, you know, connection to said e-bike, which doesn't exist because you didn't have it in the first place. And then is your bike going to be impounded for thirty days, and we know they absorbed in tow fees and. You know, little Timmy's bike is never gonna be returned and, and you know, the liability may be associated with now we're keeping somebody's property and. So it's, it's a little bit, a lot, uh, convoluted, but I I do hear you. Uh, we are, um, proactively, um, making efforts to. Uh, do enforcement of these e-bikes all the time, especially around school hours. Uh, we do have, um, one of our reserves that goes out routinely, uh, on a legal, uh, electric bike. And does stop, uh, these kids when he sees them. And again, we do have a very excitable new, uh, motor officer, uh, who also is is on the lookout for these. I know I personally joined patrol on the first day of school, uh, this year, both the first days of school, the elementary schools and the high school. Um, and a number of citations were given for e-bikes, uh, on both days, so. It's something that all of patrol shares your concern, um, as I know it's a big deal in the community, going to conferences. Uh, it's not a small town thing, it's not a big city thing, it's an everybody thing, um, it doesn't matter how big or small your jurisdiction is, it's something. Uh, you could put a thousand members of law enforcement around the country in a room, and you mention e-bikes and you're gonna hear a collective like, oh. Because everybody's dealing with it, um, and so again, I am hopeful, um, that with support from hopefully state. Uh, as well as local, and then together, we can make the streets safer, both for the individuals on the e-bikes. And the individuals that have to drive vehicles around the e-bikes, so I would just say, I agree with you, we are proactively doing what we can. In the meantime, we're navigating kind of an uncharted, uh, legal area here. And I am truly hopeful that literally in the next month or so, uh, we should be able to do more.
Okay, that is great, and because, I'm sorry, I'll I'll let you go on this.
Yeah.
So we have some resources, we have a monthly, we have a mailing list that I would estimate about eighty percent of our residents are on. And so if there's any type of information that you would like to get to our resident.
We can share that.
I think the city manager would be, um, very eager to get that information out, we have a. A newsletter that goes out to every house in our city twice a year. And you're always welcome to put an article in there regarding, uh, any topic, of course, but I think an e-bike topic would probably be. Very welcome.
When's the next time the newsletter goes out?
Uh, we should be having one go out soon, and then the next one will go out about six months later, so, I'm sorry, what?
One in the fall and one in the spring.
Yeah, I missed sometime in this volume, yeah, I think the fall one is is already gone to print. And, yeah, so.
But we do have a website that can go on.
Yeah, and if there's stuff we can put on our website.
Yeah, absolutely.
Love to put it up there also, because, uh, or if there's a link to somewhere, we could somebody on the Los Gatos website too, so don't wanna.
It's all doable.
But for the, uh, potential le- legislation in the fall. With all respect, I don't see why only some e-bikes require a license. Because even if th- they're the ones that require some pedaling, I think that was the difference. They're still incredibly dangerous and to have young kids who don't have a license. You know, I just don't know how the kids are gonna have to be injured or killed before, would anything that has that. Uh, that's, you know, has that electric thing, uh, should require a license, uh, at a minimum age. It's, it is just as dangerous, whether it's class one or class two, as it is if it's class three, it might.
Yeah, I mean, certainly the ones that, uh, you know, go faster like motorcycles, I think are more troubling than the the ones that don't grow that fast. But I mean, all of them are, uh, any of them have the potential, uh, of course, so. Um, like I said, I can, all I can kind of say is that we are with you, um, it's something that we're working on. Um, and you know, I I'm not sure if, uh, it's something that, you know, you all. We do have the jurisdiction in in Monteserino to, you know, do certain things with ordinances and so forth, so. You know, I'm sure that there's some things that you can probably discuss doing as well, and, um, like I said before, just to. Believe the point, I think working together, you know, we can, we can definitely make this better in the near future.
Yeah.
And we're planning on doing that, we're following their lead, obviously, um, but we'll be bringing something back to you in the future once.
Definitely.
It was, it was due to me, yeah, that, um, it's the parents that are accountable and responsible. For you, for the, for those youth that are, that are riding e-bikes.
Yeah.
That it's their responsibility, you know, so the education and the awareness. And the outreach should be directed to parents, uh, that are enabling their kids to ride these, you know, powerful bikes. And in some case, in most cases, probably in in responsible manner, but in some cases, not. The parents were ultimately responsible.
It's really interesting, I've seen, uh, literally a wide variety of, um, parent parental responses. Uh, generally, it's when, you know, little Suzie or Jimmy has been in an accident or done something they shouldn't be doing on the bike.
A little too late then.
Well, I mean, thankfully, eh, not to that point, but yes, uh, and so you have the parents. Kind of different archetypes, parents, you have the ones that really didn't know, oh, they wanted it, I just bought it for them, you know, people have means and maybe they don't necessarily look into what they're buying. They wanna make their kid happy, so that's, that's one, and then through education, they realize, oh, maybe I shouldn't have done that. There's another one that doesn't care, uh, certainly not my parenting style, but, uh, you know, my kid wanted it. Hmm, you know, it's broken, I'm gonna get him another, just, it's horrible. Uh, you know, and then you have the one that maybe is in another country and doesn't even know what their kid is doing, um. Uh, you know, and then you have the one that maybe is in another country and doesn't even know what their kid is doing, um, so. You know, we're we're not the, uh, I mean, obviously we break the law for the the parenting police, but. In terms of parenting styles, you know, there's all kinds of parents. Uh, so we're certainly doing the best that we can, and again, that is why we created that pamphlet. Um, I know Jackie Rose, uh, who handles our community relations has been. Uh, sharing it when she goes to our community events, but I like all your ideas, I can. Uh, probably tonight, definitely, uh, get that pamphlet to Diana, um, and, uh. We can, you know, kind of go from there, but I I agree, I think there's some education to be done.
By the way, um. If you ever sit by Dave's Avenue School. Uh, I will give you a dollar for every e-bike you see stopped at that stop sign. I've never seen an e-bike stop at the stop signs by Dave's Avenue School.
Well, we can put our motor officer there tomorrow and.
Never seen that. Whether it's class one, class two, or class three. They're supposed to stop at.
I mean, there's liability on the points, these are juveniles, so.
That's the point, that is the point, is, you know, and so the education and awareness and outreach and information should be directed to them, not the kids. You know, it's because they're ultimately accountable and responsible.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to do a full frontal. Uh, approach and and hit everybody, uh, not literally, children and the parents, I agree with you wholeheartedly, no.
Yeah. So are there any other questions for the captain? Well, thank you for spending a few minutes with us.
That's part of this.
An hour and a quarter. And we do have some delicious stand's donuts. For your time here.
My diet ends in ten days. I have my own.
I I will make a comment and say this is probably one of the more insightful.
Yes.
Uh, reports that we've had. In the past. Two, three years.
I appreciate it, I mean, I took your feedback last time. Uh, tried to make it somewhat comparable to what Los Gatos gets and include some, uh, more statistics and. Facts and so forth, so you know, you're, all jokes aside, you know, the open comment part, your, your feedback is greatly appreciated because ultimately. You know. We work for you guys, so we'd like to give you what you want.
All right, going back, I have good news, uh, Barry has a, a a digital that says that she completed her thirty day. Uh, diet in two and a half days.
Maybe that's a sell.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, have a great night.
Thank you. All right. Item one is finally done. So let's move on to oral communication, at this point, anybody. Either in the audience or online wishing to speak for three minutes about a topic that is. Not on the agenda. Please do so now. I see nobody in the chamber. And we have nobody online wishing to speak, so we'll move on to written communication. We have any written communication need to be aware of for tonight? Okay, so now we're moving here, so that brings us to the consent calendar. And is there anybody? Online or any council members who would like to pull an item? See none, is there any public comment for any item, yes?
Oh, I was just gonna ask if you could separate, uh, uh. Four from two and three, take two and three together and then four.
All right. Um, so we're gonna go two, three, and then four. Sure, so we're, we're basically pulling item four then. Just for the record, I think. Okay, um, is there anybody online who would wish to speak about any item on the consent calendar? All right, so at this point, I will be looking for a motion for items two and three on the consent calendar.
I'd like to approve, um, make a motion to approve two and three on the consent calendar.
Okay. I need a second, second, thank you, can we have a roll call vote, please? Do we need one with you, sir? Yes. I won.
Oh, that's right, sorry, sorry about that. Um, council member Mecha check?
Aye.
Council member Torin?
Aye.
Council member Shannon?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Allen?
Yes.
And Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Any questions?
Great, and item number four. Approve the settlement agreement with Reynolds Somores. Some more, some more Annis?
So do you need a?
I just need a motion for that, please.
Or a move?
A move, do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Council member Torin?
Aye.
Council member Shannon?
Yes.
Council member Mecha check?
I'm staying.
Vice Mayor Allen?
Yes.
Mayor Frank?
Yes. Okay, thank you very much, so that brings us to item five, introduction and waiver of first reading of ordinance number. NS dash two four seven. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Monte Sereno, amending the zoning code section ten dot. Zero eight dot zero four zero. And ten dot fifteen dot one hundred, and I think we have a staff report for that.
Yes, thank you, um, and we do have a presentation to go along with it. There you go. So, um, this is an ordinance that, um. We seem to have been bringing, be bringing similar ordinances to council about once a year to, um, clean up and perhaps streamline some of our regulations. And the proposed ordinances, um, ordinance amendments before you tonight are designed, um, to do just that, to streamline certain. Um, requirements for housing projects, which is part of one of our goals in the housing element. Um, as well as, um, there's a, um, proposed ordinance change, um. That is related to one of the council's strategic goals for this year for improving fire safety, um, related to eucalyptus trees. So for. Uh, the first. Sort of set of amendments are related to the requirements for a site development permit. So a site development permit is a planning application that is required for certain projects. And the planning application does need to be, um, submitted. Obviously to the planning department. Um, the application is reviewed and then scheduled for a, um, site and architectural commission hearing. And the commission, um, makes the final decision on these applications, so it does. Um, add. I would say. Maybe about three months to the review time of these types of projects. So if we were to reduce some of the requirements for the types of projects that require the site development permits, it would assist residents. Um, in moving forward their projects a little bit quicker. So the first. Change, um, that is recommended. Um, in the ordinance tonight is. Related to accessory buildings over one hundred and twenty square feet. So currently, the municipal code requires a site development permit. For any accessory building that is greater than one hundred and twenty square feet. And this would include sheds, storage buildings, detached garages, um, pool houses. But it does not include ADUs, um, ADUs are regulated by state law. And, um, as part of those regulations, there is no, um, public hearing or discretionary review allowed, so those. Um, ADU permits do go straight to a building permit without any planning, separate planning review. That, again, as ADUs are regulated by state laws. The ADUs are allowed to be, um, taller buildings than our zoning code allows for other types of accessory buildings. The ADUs can have a larger floor area and they can be closer to the property lines. Um, than our zoning code allows for the accessory buildings. So just in reviewing our regulations, it seems that perhaps. Our current regulations for accessory buildings may be in a little excessive, given that ADUs. Um, are potentially more impactful to neighboring properties. And there is no discretionary review involved in those, we do issue. Um, dozens of ADU permits every year, and we do rarely receive complaints from the neighboring property owners. So it, it doesn't seem that, um, accessory structures are. Um, too controversial or too impactful to neighbors.
I, I don't under. I, 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 I don't understand that, why. It would seem in terms of. The, uh, look and feel of our community, we. We don't have any control. Over ADUs, even though.
Vice Mayor, sorry, um, could you speak closer?
Oh, I'm sorry, uh. You know, it's. There's nothing we can do about ADUs, even if we think we prefer to have more of a setback line, but in terms of the look and feel of our community. I don't know. You know, uh. The existing regulations we have. Uh, you know, I speak as someone who's lived here for forty six years, I think are very good, and I don't know why we'd wanna water them down. You know, we're s- we're stuck with the state law for ADUs, but why would we wanna change our city ordinances? Uh, to do that.
So the, the proposed ordinance would not change the limitations that we currently have in its own code for ADUs, I'm sorry, for accessory structures? It would just not require the public hearing for their review. But the same height, the same area limits and the same setback limits would still apply.
Yes, but the whole purpose of. The, the site and architectural commission, I say as a former member, is. Uh, if staff deals with quantitative rules and site and the architecture commission deals with the qualitative considerations. I'd, I'd still. Like. You know, the neighbors to have a chance. To weigh in on those, uh, things from a qualitative point of view.
So that's certainly something council can.
As I.
Can direct and discuss.
We'll, we'll discuss that.
Um, so. The next change that is recommended is related to, um, roof modifications. And the current requirements are that the site development permit. Process is required for any new or modified roof design. Or any increase in roof height more than twenty four inches above the existing. Um, the determination of what is a newer modified roof design can be very subjective and widely interpreted. So staff is recommending. Uh, modification of this section to remove that portion and maintain the site development permit requirements. Um, only where the roof height is increased by more than twenty four inches for a modification of a roof design.
Again, has that been a problem over the, it? Is, is, has that rule been in effect for the last thirty or forty years and have we had great problems with it? And if so, why haven't we? Why hasn't this come up in the, in the past?
So this was put in the code in two thousand seventeen, this current language. So again, as part of our housing element requirements of streamlining permit reviews. Staff reviewed what our current regulations are and are recommending areas that we can. Potentially streamline that process, but this is certainly. A presentation to council that's something, final decision for council. So, the next. Item is, um, regarding front yard columns, so. In the site development permit requirements of the municipal code, there are two sections related to front yard columns. Which could allow such columns. To be up to eight or nine feet in height, depending on. If they have a light post on top of the column and if they were initially. Permitted or existing before these regulations were installed. Um. Since, and these were. I'm sorry, let me just look this up real quick, these regulations were added to the municipal code. In two thousand eleven. Um, staff was not able to find. Um, any permits that have been applied for under these regulations. And since. These were implemented in two thousand eleven. In two thousand twenty one, the city did review the fence requirements. And at that time, limited front yard fences, which would include columns integrated into a fence or a driveway gate. Um, are limited to three feet in height without a permit. Or up to six feet in height with a site development permit. So staff is suggesting that. Um, that is a sufficient maximum height allowance of, um, the six feet that's currently allowed in the fence organs. And so eliminating these, and the column requirements that could allow columns up to eight or nine feet. And then that's it for the changes, um, to a site development permit. The next, um, proposed amendment is regarding eucalyptus tree removal. And as part of the council's strategic goals for this year. Um, council did direct staff to consider. Um, acquiring eucalyptus tree removals, trees to be removed when a new house is constructed on a site. Um, eucalyptus trees and particularly the gum varieties. Can be a fire hazard as their bark has natural oils that can be prone to spreading fires. Um, so the draft ordinance would require that blue gum or red gum eucalyptus trees. Be removed on a site if a new house were constructed. There is an exception, um, in the draft ordinance. If the tree is located over one hundred and fifty feet from any property line or any other structure. Um, that would be exempt from removal. And the blue gum and the red gum varieties were. Um, included in this requirement because they already have been deemed as an undesirable species in our tree ordinance. And then lastly is. Um, now. Item that came up, um, it is not included, staff is not recommending a change in the draft ordinance. But did bring it to discussion, um, to the site and architectural commission. And again, I'm here for council tonight, and that is related to story pool certification. So as part of a site development permit requirement, there are story pools that are required for. Um, projects that require additions, or I'm sorry, that are applying for an addition over a certain size. Those story pools are currently required to be certified by a land surveyor or a civil engineer. To ensure that the height and the location of the pools do meet the. Um. Proposal in, in applicant's plans. Um. This was an item that was also added to the municipal code fairly recently. Um, it what, the certification requirement was added into, a little older, sorry, two thousand nine, losing traffic time here. Um, and that, at that time, there was a concern that the story pools did not represent the actual. Where there was a concern that may, story pool may not represent the actual proposed construction, and so the certification process was added. Um, there is, um, has been some concerns raised that that process can increase the cost. Um, or delay a project, um. For the applicant needing to get an engineer or a surveyor out to the site to do the story pool verification. Um, the site and architectural commission did not recommend. Um, removing the certification requirement of the story pools. So that is not included in the draft ordinance tonight. But if, um, council feels otherwise, we could certainly bring back. Um, an, another ordinance in the future, um, with that if. If council so directs. And that completes the proposed changes, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, do we have any questions of staff? So. In summary. What, what is the, the summary of what you're asking for here? That's my question.
So the, the purpose of the summary or the specific changes?
What are the specific changes that you are recommending council to review and approve tonight?
So, um, removal of the site development permit requirement for accessory. Buildings.
Yeah.
Mod, remove, modifying the site development permit requirements for roof modifications to. Require such permit where the roof structure increases in height by more than twenty four inches.
Less than twenty four is fine.
Correct.
And, but that's for accessory structures or is that for all buildings?
All buildings.
All buildings, okay.
Um, removal of the requirements for, um, or allowances for. Columns to be up to eight or nine feet in height.
You wanna keep it at six?
Keep it at six with the fence ordinance. Um. The, require the removal of the eucalyptus trees of blue gum and red gum. In conjunction with. The construction of a new house.
Okay. Thank you for answering my question.
I've already asked my questions, uh.
Okay.
As painfully obvious.
So, okay, so I, I have a couple, is there any way we can put the list back up? I guess my first question is, is this list going to be included in the, um. Either the minutes or the staff report will be added, because it is a nice summary. Maybe if you could email it to me?
The presentation?
Yeah, that would be great.
Oh, I do have a, a procedural question maybe for the. Uh, city attorney, could, there's sort of four parts, we. Vote on the four parts separately rather than the whole thing as a package?
So it's all one ordinance, so if you wanted to, um. You couldn't separate that out to create four new ordinances, but you could go through. Uh, just as a discussion to find out where the consensus was, what majorities we had, and then. Vote to amend the ordinance to reflect. What you want and what you don't want. That being.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so so the first um question was. Um, currently, a site development permit is required for what size um? Structure.
For accessory structures over one hundred and twenty square feet.
Well, that's what this is currently saying, so what's what's the change? Okay, so these are the current requirements.
Yeah, so the last bullet, the draft ordinance will amend the site development requirements to remove. This accessory buildings from requiring this planning permit.
So that would be up to the maximums. Is there a maximum though for that?
There is.
Is that the is that the the table that I saw in here?
Exactly.
For R one eight, so basically we would be removing the. Um, requirements for a site development permit for an accessory unit of up to six hundred square feet and R one eight. That's essentially what we're saying and. Eight hundred square feet and R one twenty and one thousand square feet and R one forty four.
Correct, and the in the table in the staff report, the setbacks that are listed and the building heights would still be ready.
Would still would would still be the same. I like that change.
And and that. Sorry. Did site and architecture recommend that change? Where's it staff?
So um that actually came from a council member and the site and architectural commission did. Sorry, I should have said that in my report. They did review the draft ordinance and recommended approval of it of a vote of four to one. And the one commissioner who did not vote um in favor of the ordinance expressed concerns over the requirement to remove the eucalyptus trees. So there there wasn't. A discussion of a concern.
Okay, and and the site development permit. Is you have to go through site and architecture for that, but you still have to get a building permit. And go through all of those requirements that show the plan, the setbacks, et cetera.
That's correct.
So it's only taking it away from site and architecture.
Correct.
The the. Okay.
Yeah, and if I could turn in. My objection to it is that there will be. Quantitative standards from the staff, but to me, the whole purpose. Having served twice on site and architectural is for residents to be able to look at things from a qualitative point of view. And this proposed ordinance would. It did. Up into very large size like a a an acre lot, someone could build something nine hundred feet next door and it wouldn't go to site and architectural, right? Under the proposal.
If they were on R one forty four.
Yeah, yeah, I think a lot. It 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 could be a a nine hundred and fifty square foot thing and there would be no qualif- qualif. There wouldn't be looking at things from a qualitative point of view for where the neighbors could come in and uh object like they can now. Which is my, which is my objection to it.
So I have a question for Lon, like what can you give uh an example of what the neighbors might complain about? Because if the project is going to meet the requirements anyway. Um, what could the neighbors be complaining about?
Well, I could respond to that, uh Lisa, I mean. That's what site and architectural does, the uh. Everything that goes to site and architectural is already met. The setbacks and the height and everything, that's what staff does. It's the qualitative thing of the look and feel. Uh. You know, the neighbor said, well, we don't want a second floor in the neighborhood because all the other houses are single story. Well, staff is going to approve it because it meets the quantitative standards. But the whole purpose of having a site and architectural commission is for neighbors to come in in terms of. As it these qualitative things for something that meets all the legal standards. Which uh because again, it doesn't get to site and architectural if it doesn't meet the legal standards, the uh. That's where staff reviews it.
But but.
I agree, but with but with an accessory building, it's not going to be a two-story building. It's going to meet these accessory building requirements. So I tend to be more in favor of. Uh, easing the requirements for our residents to be able to build some of these accessory buildings and not require. You know, extra steps that. Probably really aren't necessary for this particular type of building. Of course, it's a different story when it's, you know, a a whole house or a a large addition. So I'm in favor of uh adopting this uh change.
Okay, thank you very much, um council member Menkachuk.
Um, are we finished with questions? Can we make comments or do you want to have questions first?
Um. You know what, let's get one piece of procedural business out of the way. I'd like to open this up for public comment. There's nobody in chamber. Is there anybody online? So this is a public hearing now.
No hands or raise.
No hands or raise, so I will close the public hearing on this and yes, we can continue and ask questions. We can discuss now. Um, so go ahead and ask your question.
Okay, so I put up an outdoor pergola.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's what it's called and it was. Less than, no, it was it was a hundred and twenty square feet, that's ten by twelve. So I think I was right at the border.
Mm-hmm.
And um. Or may I made it just a little smaller than the one twenty, so I didn't have to go to site and architecture. But I can see how, you know, if it's. If it would have been a little bit bigger, it would have been classified as accessory. Well, uh access- accessory building and I would have had to go to site and architecture and that was just. I mean, I I I purposely made it a little smaller to do that. So uh I can understand the sentiment of. Of our residents saying, why do I have to do this?
Mm-hmm.
And then, you know, people can play games anyways, but. I I'll be. Supporting this, I think.
Okay, thank you.
I in it's gone through site and architecture and uh everyone's fine with it there, so. That's kind of.
I mean, it's gone through staff.
No, it went through.
I thought you were talking about the. Talking about the building structure, I misunderstood, I apologize.
Council member Torn? Hi, welcome to the council.
Hmm, not quite prepared to respond, but um just just uh again, are we? Are we approving or discussing all of these together or separately, just to clarify?
I think it appears right now we're just discussing the accessory structure.
Okay.
So it might be easier to go topic by topic.
Alright. I have no questions.
Well, and I am also in support of at least the first part that it seems like we're focusing our discussion on. Um, especially since you could go through Costco, you could go through Home Depot and you could. See these really nice structures that are ten by fifteen feet. And I I know that there are a number of people that have said, wow, that that's really nice, but I don't want to go through the hassle of going through site and architecture. I don't want to pay the twelve hundred fifty dollars and I don't want somebody saying, well, gee, I don't like that. Grain of wood, so I'm going to vote against it. And it just became so arbitrary and and I think one of the things that all of us have heard on council is, well, you know. Here's my ugly structure because that's what the neighbors built. And I think it really does take away from a lot of people really being able to put a structure on their property. That allows them to enjoy the full economic benefit of their property and they're paying a lot of money for these properties in Monte Serrano now. So I I am in in support of this. And um.
Could I ask a question of? Has anybody else, has anybody else on the council ever served on site and architectural? See, Brian, okay. I did, thank you.
And I've been to a number of site and architecture meetings, does that count?
Absolutely.
No, but I've I've built a house in Monte Serrano, so I have been before site and architecture before.
Okay.
I will say that um when you're going before a site and architecture. I mean, it seems to be pretty straightforward. You go through and work with planning and it's like, okay, this looks good. You meet all the requirements, but there's still that uncertainty, the unknown. That causes a fair amount of stress and, you know, uncertain uncertainty equals uh stress, I guess.
And and I think that a number of these structures are now um prefab.
Yeah.
And it would be nice if people had confidence that they could purchase one of these types of properties and put it in their, put it in their yard. Without having to worry about.
The s- structures that you can buy.
Yeah, yeah.
When you're not. Talking about a nine hundred and seventy five foot structure on an acre lot, right? Which this would exempt.
Well, at at that point, they'll just call it an ADU and put it in no matter what.
It will, it meets the AD requirements of a kitchen and everything else.
But yeah, but that's only for a person that has a really large piece of of land that. I'm probably not going to be able to see into their backyard to begin with.
I think two thirds of the uh lots of Monte Street are carved forty four. I believe. Okay. So I could tell the minority of you on this one.
Um, so. So we we I think we covered the first page. Um, or is this the second page?
This is the second one.
Okay, so this is kind of, let's call this the 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 roof part. Any questions or comments about the roof part?
The last bullet is what you're recommending.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
No questions.
No, no questions or comments on the roof part? And what about the, yeah?
So. So uh staff would go through and make sure that it's twenty four inches and the. Less than twenty four inches. And it. Uh. And and review it. So that it ticks all those boxes and avoids. The site going to site and architecture.
Correct, so we would, staff would confirm that any proposed roof height increase does not. If this were approved, does not exceed the twenty four inch maximum. And of course, that it also meets the maximum height allowances. For the type of building and the location, and if that were the case, then um the project would just need to obtain a building permit. And wouldn't go through the the site development permit process ahead of that.
Okay. Okay, can can we see the next page, please? Oh, gosh. What goes around comes around. I was on council the first time this came up.
Boy, we talked about this all night.
I don't think I've ever seen a nine foot column.
I don't, that was the old, well, yes, um. Can I recuse myself? I don't even.
I believe it was related to columns that had um decorative items added to the top of them, which then got you to the ninth feet.
Yeah.
So there was one.
There was somebody who had it. There's always one. But um, is there any any um, is there agreement that we we like? What that says?
Yeah.
I think I'm seeing heads nodding. Lisa, don't want to forget you.
No, I'm listening and I don't have an an issue with this one or a question.
And I think our last page, or was that the last, this is the last, last, last. This is kind of the new part, though.
Yes.
How do we feel about eucalyptus trees? We've all said glowing things about them. Usually on the negative end of the spectrum and um as always, I am more than willing to come up with ways to get rid of. Eucalyptus trees.
So this one, Mr. Mayor.
I I do have a question.
Yeah.
Why is it except when they're located one hundred and fifty feet is. Why?
Um. Can I answer that one, please? As I was walking around and I'm I'm looking at these trees going, that tree's got to be a hundred and fifty feet high. If it falls down, it's going to take out all of these houses around you.
Just a hundred and fifty, but what's the magic about a hundred and fifty feet?
So um.
There are a few trees above that height, I think.
And this is an exception on the town of Los Altos Hills has this requirement. Um, they do have the hundred and fifty foot exception. And the idea behind it is just that maybe far enough from a road or another structure that it wouldn't be. Um, as much of a fire threat.
But it's still a fire threat.
That that is my point.
Yeah, it's still a fire.
That it's. A hundred feet is not that much and it's still a fire.
Yeah, so am I hearing that we want to require a removal of all eucalyptus trees on a site?
That's what I would require.
I that was a a thought.
I I can't see this. Being time after time after time. You know, I like you made onesie twosie it in five years. And I. I if if this is similar to Los Altos Hills. Then I would support their. They've got more experience than we do in this, I would say.
Yeah, I I'm I'm also in agreement. The only powerpoint that I was going to put up to that is if it really is that far away, it does not pose a hazard. To destruction of property. Um. It's it it's going to cost a lot of money to remove a hundred and fifty foot high tree. It's probably going to be like fifty thousand dollars. So I just didn't know. You know, want to just. I just want to let everybody know that because it could be a burden for uh somebody who's trying to. Do something to get them.
And four members of the site and architectural ward are chargeable with a hundred and fifty feet to to remade them.
Okay. So do we want to keep, do we want to keep this? I see heads nodding, yes. Oh, this is perfect.
Yeah, I have, I have some questions, concerns about creating this rule. Um, one of the concerns is what you just mentioned, Mayor Craig, about the cost of removing these trees. And it may be a rarity if it ever happens, but it could potentially be a situation where somebody buys a property or owns a property, wants to build a house. And has a number of these trees on the property. It could maybe make or break their ability to even build on that lot due to the cost of removing these trees. And I'm wondering if. There's a way that we can structure this that. Could protect somebody who's in that sort of situation. I also have some concerns about just blanket saying that all these eucalyptus trees need to just be removed. Um, I I'm not a soils engineer. But if somebody's on a hillside and they have some of these trees and they have to all be removed, could that create? Instability in the in the hillside. Also, what does what does tree removal mean? Does it mean the entire tree and the stump and some of the roots have to be dug up? If it just means cutting it down to a stump, what can the tree regrow from that stump? I mean, what are we fully accomplishing from that? Um. Some of these trees provide shade, beauty, um screening from neighbors. There might be neighbors who are going to be very unhappy that suddenly all these trees that provides, you know, some screening to their home are suddenly gone because of this ordinance. I'm just, I I understand the eucalyptus trees are a big issue and that people are very concerned about them with the fire. I just am thinking there's maybe more to this that we need to think about and discuss.
What would everybody think to a compromise where we do not add this to the existing one, but do some outreach? To the residents and get a, see if we can get some more feedback on this.
What what is what does that mean, outreach?
Well, we should um maybe do a special newsletter to our mailing list. That will say that. These are, these are some of the ideas that have been brought to the city council and the city council would like your feedback about. Is that something we typically do? We've tried in the past.
I would support that. I I agree with uh. Uh, with Lisa, uh. The, I don't like the eucalyptus trees, but I could see if. Someone had three or four and it was going to be a couple hundred thousand dollars that. It'd be, you know, maybe they could be trimmed or. I I think. I like your idea, maybe try to get some citizen resident.
Yeah, because I I think that one really has a a near term effect. And it can be quite substantial.
Yeah.
So, you know, yes, council member Menkachuk.
Question. Does Los Altos Hills require removal of all blue gum and red gum eucalyptus trees? When a new house is constructed, except if they're a hundred and fifty feet. From a rubber structure.
They do as well as their ordinance includes a couple other species of. Eucalyptus trees. Um. The the draft ordinance is limited to these two varieties because our. Tree removal permit ordinance already deems the blue gum and the red gum is unsuitable. So to kind of align with that is. Is where um. Those species came from in the draft ordinance. And I'm looking up the Los Altos Hills requirement right now to see what the other species are.
So. We're watering down their. Ordinance. For Montesorino that. If they've included other species.
Yes, so they also include a red river gum, a honey gum, and a mona gum. Tree. Um, in their ordinances, um. Just based on the. Tree removal permits that, that we've seen in the last several years. Um. I would say the vast majority of eucalyptus trees in Montesorino are the blue gum and the red gum.
And. For, forgive me, this did, is a recommendation from site and architecture. Is that correct?
Yes, with a four vote.
With a.
So there was one dissent.
Okay. So. Why don't we take this kind of a, can we take an informational vote? Just to kind of get a feeling for what we think about this?
Why don't we just? Talk about, I can support. Doing all, all of the recommendations as put forth by staff.
Okay.
I like one, two, and three and the uh for the fourth, for the eucalyptus, one is taking a poll of residents.
Okay, Councilmember Alan.
Vice Mayor Alan? Yeah. Uh. I'm where uh. Kid is uh. On one, as I'm a. Voice of one, I respect to choose my fellow council members. Uh, so I vote yes on one, two, and three. And on four, if the residents. I, I actually like four, but I feel more comfortable knowing that uh would we put out a poll? That a majority of our residents supported and then. I would be in favor of that, too.
Okay. And Councilman, Councilmember Shannon?
Um, yeah, I'm in favor of the earlier ones. I think the tree. Eucalyptus tree issue needs to just be. Thought about a little bit more, worked, worked on a little bit more, and I would appreciate some feedback from the residents. Um, and we're still gonna talk about the um certification issue, right?
Yes.
Story poll certification?
Yes, cuz that's, that's not part of the changes. But I thought we'd get rid of, I get rid of, I thought we would cover the, the changes to the ordinance. And then we'll talk about the story poll changes that have been suggested.
So, Madam City Attorney. If, if, if the council. Uh. Watchful, who, one, two, and three, but get some. Uh, residents' feedback on the. Eucalyptus tree removal. Uh. Madam Counsel, how do we do that?
I can give you a motion if you're ready.
We're ready.
Okay. So the motion would be to introduce ordinance number NS dash two four seven. With the amendments of eliminating the second recital related to the gum varieties of eucalyptus trees. And also amend or eliminate, remove section three of the ordinance. And waive the reading thereof.
That's exactly what I was going to say, too.
Yeah.
Wow, but.
Question, but. How, how do we deal with? The eucalyptus issue with regard to a resident servant?
We'll do that first.
Yeah, we're gonna.
Not only are we.
Another time.
Got it. If you entertain a motion, Mr. Mayor, uh. In by Detroit, what she said.
I'll start from that. Okay, so we have a emotion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Shannon?
Yes.
Councilmember Mekachuk?
Hi.
Councilmember Tor, uh, Councilmember Torin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Allen?
Yes.
And Mayor Craig?
Yes. All right, thank you very much, everyone. And now let's talk about story polls.
Sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry, sorry.
The eucalyptus, so it sounds like um the coun- council is interested in doing public outreach, doing a little more research and then bringing.
Yes, does that require a motion?
Directions.
Direction, right, yeah. And I think if we do this within, you know, maybe. First meeting in twenty twenty-six or something like that, just to give them some time or.
Yes.
Will that give staff enough time to kind of? Get some feedback from the, from the residents?
Yes.
Great. Okay. So, um. I was at the meeting where they put the story poll certification in place and I. Jaking my head the entire time. So who would like to, um, I guess I gave my opinion on it. Um. I, I, I will say a couple things. One, I thought it was. I thought it was not needed when it was put in. And secondly.
You're talking about just the certification.
Just the certification.
That's the story.
That's, no, I'm not talking, so I don't think we're talking at all about getting rid of story polls. Just having them certified by either a civil engineer or an architect or somebody that's gonna charge you a lot of money to do it. And the cost has gone way up since this ordinance was, was first put in place. And I would personally offer to take any site and architecture person and teach them how to use a protractor. And figure out how high a story poll is, if that's what they're really concerned about. Okay, you and I are having a special lunch here. Councilmember Mekachuk?
I will say that I have seen. Numerous people game the system. And they game the system time after time after time. They game the system by not getting building permits. They game the system by not getting site development permits on accessory dwelling, uh, uh, accessory structures. And they game the system big time on story pools. I've seen that. And I don't need a protractor to figure that out. And, you know, so. I do believe that it is. Uh, it adds some cost. But to uh Vice Mayor Allen's point. Giving the neighbors some additional. Uh. Uh. Confidence that the story polls are put up correctly and depict what. Is considered being. Under consideration. I think that that cost gets lost. In the rounding of what we're trying to do uh in terms of structures. And then, and by the way, the cost of the story polls. The taller they are, the more it costs, right?
So. Right. Well, no, I, I, again, I think story polls are a great idea.
If the pe- people, I have witnessed people gaming the system and actually being proud of gaming the system.
You're in, in.
I'm in favor of the certification, yes, I'm sorry, I should have said, all right.
Which is the recommendation of the Site and Architectural Commission, which did, right? And I uh, I agree with uh Councilon Metaphetic Check that uh. I, I think we, we need the certification uh so that neighbors have the confidence that that's what it's gonna look like when it's built.
Okay, so I, I, I will defer to. Sign and I, oh, hang on one second, Councilmember, uh, I'll get right back to you. Um. When you see people gaming the system with story polls, are we talking six inches, a foot, five feet, ten feet? I mean, if, if a story poll was off by a foot, would that really matter?
Well. It's like drying plants, you know? I'm gonna draw the plants here and then I'm gonna build the structure and I'm gonna move it.
No, we're not, we're not talking about.
I, I, it's, it's, so the short answer is. I believe it should be within. Probably de minimis, which would be less than six inch, six inches or less.
Okay.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Allen?
I'm in, I'm in favor of the certification.
Okay, and, and um. I'm gonna let Councilmember Shannon, you had your hand up with a question.
Yeah, I had a question for staff about the story polls and I'm not suggesting that anybody from our staff should be certifying that they are accurate. But in general, does somebody go out and take a look to see if they appear to fairly represent what is being put before? Site and architecture for the site development permit?
So, um, the staff does um post a notice at the site, usually um about. A week and a half before the hearing, the story polls are required to be up two weeks before the hearing. So we do see them within about two to three days of when they've been placed. Um, it. It isn't. It isn't easy. To determine if the height is accurate. Um, oftentimes, you know, we may or may not have access to the site to even measure if the setbacks. Are, you know, the edge of the roof, Eve. Um, is at the accurate setback.
My comment was that, uh. It was the unanimous vote of Site and Architectural. Commission that we don't change this. And uh. I would point out that the two of us who are alums of that think we shouldn't change it either.
Was, was it a unanimous vote by the Site and Architectural Committee?
So the overall vote on the draft ordinance was four to one. The one commissioner that dissented, um, his comments were related to the eucalyptus.
I, I guess I should say that the site and architecture weighed in about story polls at all.
I'm sorry, they weighed in to not include it in the ordinance presented to the council.
And, and all five of them were in agreement that it should not be changed. The only dissent was.
The only dissent was the eucalyptus trees.
And we've honored, we've honored that dissent by looking for some more outreach.
Okay, um, Councilmember Torin, did you? Something like you.
I, I'm, I'm. You're gonna take the uh recommendation from the. Site and Architecture from.
Okay. Um. Yeah.
Can I just make a couple more comments about it? Um. I feel like sometimes. Councils can put an undue burden on. Families trying to build homes. I don't know that a certification of the story polls. Provides much for the community. The community is going to see what is going up. They're gonna get a very good sense of it and if they have more questions. Absolutely, they can come to the city and, you know, look at the plans and, and that's really where they're going to. Get the information they want on whether or not they have issues with the project. Also, the state of California for housing element is looking to cities to ease the burdens of uh constructing in your city. So this is a way we could show that we've, you know, made some moves in that direction by, by releasing this burden. So I'm just really not in favor of requiring a, an another step for the homeowner with the certification.
Okay, um, I'd like to, okay. Pull back here for just a minute and open this up for public comment. Seeing nobody in chambers, is there anybody online?
No hands are raised.
No hands are raised. Okay, so now we'll bring it back to council. And um I would just also like to. Uh, echo Councilmember Shannon's comments. I've, I've always felt that this was an unnecessary and expensive burden to place on a homeowner. Especially with the technology we have today. And the quality of the drawings that are put out and I guess I would put forward. If, if uh as a compromise even, because I don't think we actually require it. But if there was a, a piece of the plan or a part of the plan that actually had a very accurate rendering. Of what the, what the um. Visual footprint on the property would be because. Uh, again, in agreement with Councilmember Shannon, I've gone out and looked at story polls and. I, I, I just don't get that much out of them. I mean, it does, I, I, I go back and look at the final house and. Wow, that looks nothing like what those story polls were trying to tell me. And I think most people are, are in agreement with me and, and at any point. If anybody disagreed. With the story polls and called them into question, I think that we would take action to ensure that the story polls. Were correct. And at that point, if there was a, yes, they are, no, they're not. Well, then at that point, you can require. The homeowner to get some kind of certification or, 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 or some type of, of um. I'll, I'll just say certification, it may not be a, a civil engineer, but some type of certification that says, these story polls are. Accurate to the plans that have been submitted to the city. But I think it should be something that should be brought forward instead of making it. It, it just feels like you're just penalizing everybody all at once by saying, we know you're gonna lie. And we're gonna make them pay for not telling that lie. So, um. Just Councilmember Torin.
These are, they're very good points. Did, I, I was curious, um, I'm, I'm a novice here, but the Site and Architecture Committee, did they, did they take? These similar types of concepts in. In consideration when they were talking about this issue?
So the, the commission's um discussion on this issue is they. They were strongly in favor of maintaining the certification. Um, to verify the accuracy of the.
But did they, but did they consider so much of mayor here, you know, some kind of compromises or? Was that discussed?
Cause they were in favor of it, there wasn't really.
There was no.
No, there was, no.
Was it?
No, but it's part of the discussion, they just, they just were in favor of it.
Yeah, I don't think we've ever really discussed story polls as technology has really changed in the last sixteen years. That I just, I just, again. Not only has it changed, but it's increased the cost of doing these story polls. And I think that there should be alternate ways that we should take a look at easing the burden of homeowners that are trying to. Build inside of Montesorino. Councilmember Mekachuk?
I appreciate that, that perspective. Uh. But, you know, when. When we ask staff about, you know. Looking at the story polls. I don't think staff ever wants to get in, in between a homeowner and are the story polls accurate? I mean, it's just, that's something you don't wanna, that you wish you would want to avoid. And I think as well to the Site and Architectural Commission. When you're sitting. And you, and you look at the plans. And you review them. And then you go to the site and you see the story polls and you've got the plans in your hands, you're looking at them, you're saying, okay. Like this is the ridge line, here's where it's going. You know, what is that gonna do for? Visual appeal, you know, neighbors, that sort of thing, like. And, and being able to rely on the accuracy of those. Takes a lot of the pressure off the Site and Architectural Commission. And makes their job easier, they've got more confidence in saying, okay, I get it, I, I see, you know, you can see El Sorino. From this angle, you can't see El Sorino from that angle, it's taking away, you know, whatever it is. So I think that's probably why. They, you know, wasn't an issue with, with them, they didn't wanna have that taken away.
Yeah, and I agree with that, having in certain two terms, when neighbors come in. To the Site and Architectural. That, in my experience, they've always talked about the story polls and they've never talked about the plans and specs. I've sort of two terms on it, I used a chair it. And uh, but having settled that, I think we've all expressed views and uh. Uh, I. I'm not sure that a majority wants to change things, Mr. Mayor, but we could.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm feeling, I'm feeling it too, so. Uh, so I think we've all, anybody have any final saying that they would like to put out? Yes.
You know, probably, your point about technology increasing, absolutely. When I built my house, designed and built it. I mean, we were using three D modeling. And we were one of the first ones to do that and I'm like, well, why wouldn't everyone do that? You know, you should be able to take. The lands, uh, the, the. This, the hillside, whatever it is, and put your structure on there and then you move it around with your mouse and you see it from all different angles. But we're not quite there yet and not all architectural firms are using that software. Probably in three to five years, you know, as the, as the costs go down and more. People that are, are younger, that are more computer adept. Are in these architectural firms, you'll, this requirement may go away, but I don't think we're there yet.
Okay.
So if I could say one more quick thing about this.
Go ahead, Councilmember Shannon.
Thank you. And it's, I, I guess it's partially a question for other council members and staff who have more experience with this, but. My impression with story polls is that it's um. That people don't necessarily read their mail when they get something from the city that says there's gonna be a project in your neighborhood, but when the story polls go up. Everybody suddenly notices, that's when they start asking questions, that's when they start coming in. So my impression is that the story polls are really more like no. So my impression is that the story polls are really more like notice for the neighbors. Uh, so that they can come in and inquire, but based upon what um. Vice Mayor Allen just said about people come in and they ask a lot about the story polls, like. Maybe people are relying on those story polls to give them the accurate presentation of what the structure is going to be. Just want a little more feedback on that.
But that was, uh, by having served two terms on site and architectural, uh, Lisa, that was. My impression of the meetings, that that's what people talked about, because. Most people cannot visualize from the two, you know, from the paper plans, they need to physically see it. In three D to see the impact it's gonna have on their neighborhood, and again. To me, the whole function of the site and architectural division is the qualitative impact of. The structure of the neighborhood, because the staff, again, with setback lines and everything, the staff does that. So I I think they're absolutely critical, and and I agreed with. So, and then check that, uh, they 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 just have to be, yeah, and.
Is there any liability to the city if we don't require certification and then somebody did have really? Inaccurate story polls and then later a neighbor claimed it and sues the city over it, do we have any liability?
No, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, they have an opportunity to do their own research, and so we're putting them on notice. It's been up to them to determine. If there are issues and to raise those at the um, hearing.
Okay, thank you.
And and I'll also say that I've been to site and architectural meetings where. Even after the the certification, people still say, well, I don't think those polls are right. So.
Yeah, exactly, and I just think if they didn't have to do any certification, yeah, well. And then, and then I guess, uh, and again, just kind of going back to what council member Shannon was saying about really. How valuable these are. Does the only part of the story poll that have to be certified are the height and the location of them. They really don't say anything about the netting that goes around it. And so a lot of times you'll see story polls go up, and then you'll see the net and it kind of sides in the middle, especially if it's a really hot period. Of the year, and I'm just saying. I I would, I would challenge anybody to say. That story poll is. Giving me the absolute most accurate picture, and if that thing was off by a foot. I would definitely be against this project, if it was off by. Briefing, I would definitely be against this project, and. To be able to get that level of of confidence, we're gonna charge somebody twenty thousand dollars or so to do that.
That was my question.
That's that was about the.
How how much, that was, that was my question is.
Well, that's the cost when I talk to builders.
What's the average cost of a certification, is it, is that the?
So, um, we did not look into the cost of the actual story polls um, for this staff report. We did reach out to a few um, regular architects and designers who work in Montes Reno. I did only receive one response with an actual cost figure for the certification. And that was approximately five hundred dollars. But for the certification, not the actual, the story polls themselves with the.
For the certification, just for the certification issue, so that twenty thousand.
No, if it's five hundred, then, so what are we talking about, if it's?
Five hundred bucks.
That's it.
That was the, the information that I responded.
Is it based on size or or complexity or anything or?
I would put forth most of the five hundred dollars is mo- uh. Mobilizing a surveyor or someone to go to the site and to look at it.
But is that, but is that the certification here?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're.
They are, they are certifying that the story polls are in the correct height.
They're, they're gonna go out there and they're gonna say, yeah, that looks pretty.
They're gonna go. All right, it's.
I I guess I'm just gonna summarize the conversations in here that there's. Not a bill of the council to take a look at our story poll ordinance, do I have concurrent on that?
At this time.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes.
What what is the question?
To that, we have concurrence that we're not going to visit or take a look at changing our story poll.
At this time, right, right, yeah.
And so we got one, two, three, and council member Shannon and myself think it's kind of a nuisance. All right, so we will then close item number five. And move on to item number six. And that is to consider and accept the city manager's quarterly report covering July first through September thirtieth. You're up Diana.
Thank you, the the quarterly report does include um, several items, notable items that have. Um, been worked on or completed during the third quarter of this year. I will highlight um, quickly just a couple of them, one is that our building permit activity does remain very high. Um, as shown in the report, um, for the first three months of this fiscal year. The building permit revenue is over double what it was last year for the same three months. And also looking at the full calendar year. The building permit revenue has increased um, over forty percent over last year. We do expect this high level of activity to remain, um, at least for the foreseeable future. In that there are many projects that are still in the plan review phase. And so the building permit has not been issued and construction has not started yet. So we have a lot of more than average projects in in the review phase also. Um, the second item I wanted to highlight is that. We brought it up earlier tonight, but the fall edition of the Peaceful Mountain Monitor newsletter will be delivered to residents at the end of this month. Um, as we have included articles a couple of times in the newsletter over the past two years, this newsletter will. Um, include a reminder that enforcement of the ban on gas powered leaf blowers will begin in January. About two years ago, the city council approved an ordinance to pro- prohibit the use of gas powered leaf blowers within the city. Um, the council had delete enforcement action of that ordinance until January of twenty twenty six. To allow sufficient time for um, the information to to be disseminated to the residents. As well as for residents to switch to electric leaf blowers. So we are coming up on that time, and we will continue to notify residents through um, additional social media postings and events. And includes my report.
Okay, thank you very much, and. Any questions for our city manager?
All right, I I just can't believe how fast time goes by, so we're just dealing with with that uh. Leaf blower seems like yesterday.
Yes. Okay.
Tempest waitches.
Okay, uh, council member comments, anybody like to make a comment?
Sure, I'll make a comment, can you put the?
Maybe committee commissioner.
Oh, first before comments.
Where did mine go?
Council member comments are.
There we are, I'm sorry, I forgot to get it over two guys. Uh, let's see here, committee commissioner reports, we'll start with our remote user tonight, council member Shannon.
Well, it's gonna be easy because I have nothing to report, there should have been a sanitation district meeting. Um, but it was canceled due to lack of quorum, seems everybody was traveling for training.
That can happen, okay, council member Allen?
Uh, no activities since the meeting.
Hey, great, council member Torn.
The city's association meeting was canceled, so no report.
Great, and council member Mac.
Uh, Silicon Valley Clean Energy Matt, uh, and. Um, I was not at the meeting because I was at the um, California's, uh, League of California Cities meeting that I can speak to in a moment. Um, the VTA was canceled, basically, the meetings were all canceled because everyone was away at the um. League of California Cities conference, so. Um, but there are meetings coming up next week for both uh. Silicon Valley, or sorry, West Valley Solid Waste and uh, West Valley um, store, it should say Stormwater. Oh, yes, that's West Valley Stormwater Authority, so they're coming up next week.
And I should say, uh, the Savakas meeting next week too.
Oh, two weeks, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Savakas meeting next week, I I should have. I'd think.
First things first.
Uh, you know, tell you in a second.
Okay, we can.
Uh, I didn't see that. Well. I am.
Okay.
All right, okay.
Yeah, and I'll make a couple of comments about the um, California League of California Cities.
Okay.
It was uh. Actually, a very, very good meeting, um. The uh, there were several thousand people there, and uh, I. Probably one of the best things about going to that meeting is not necessarily. Uh. Is is being able to meet with other council members because we can't meet outside of. Chambers, but to be with the town of LaScato's folks and uh. Uh, Lasaltos Hills and others was was really good at networking amongst that whole group. Was was, I thought, very valuable. Um, it was not so good coming home because the air traffic uh. Uh, caused a problem, but it's only an extra four hours on a Friday.
Hey, at least they didn't clip your eyelid cockpit with a wing.
Um, but but it was, it. It was good to be there, and I was very disappointed that there was nothing to vote on. And I I spoke with uh. Uh, Carolyn, who's the the executive director, I said, you've got. Four hundred cities and there's nothing that we can vote on there. I think that that's not a good use of resources, I said, you know, there's all kinds of things that they talked about during the keynotes and everything. And it's like, there's not, we couldn't, we couldn't deal with with passing any resolutions, so I I raise that point.
Do you, do you think it was because? You know, it's been a long haul to try to get a lot of bills pushed through. Legislation, you know, we get them all signed by September thirtieth. And it was just like, we just don't have any gas left. And we're gonna work over the winter, kind of like the winter break, and when we get back to work in um. At our Sacramento meeting, that we'll, we'll have a whole set of bills that that we're gonna push forward. Does it seem like when I went in in January, they had plenty to vote on by that time? So I'm I'm just curious, did you?
He said, she said it wasn't that kind of meeting, it's more to relax and feel good, and I'm like, I flew down here for three days. To relax and feel good, I'm like. You know.
Yeah, but would you recommend?
And 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 we, we had to pass, uh, um, re- was it a resolution or just a motion to allow me to be a voting member? And then, and then who's the secondary, who's the alternate? I mean, to me, my expectation was a little higher.
Okay, would would you recommend us attending this option in the future?
Um. Again, I think the, a lot of the value in this session. Was from the networking and being able to do that, and so it it's valuable from that extent, um.
I was gonna say, ask, did they have a good vendor show, did we see some interesting, that's very worthwhile.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, so you got a lot of information.
And in, in fact. You know, walking around the exhibit hall was was worth it.
Great.
Um, and I think maybe Diana's gonna be talking about something later on, um. That uh. Uh, with one of the vendors that was there that I spoke with.
Right.
So I I would answer your question, yes, I think it's worth going again next year, okay?
All right. Uh, I have nothing to report, actually, I'll I'll just report on a subcommittee that I went on, but. The uh, finance committee of the San third County Library JPA voted to push the. Full, uh, to the full board, the uh, budget of eighty one million dollars. And it looks like a strong budget, we're gonna have a little extra money in the kitty, and library is running very well.
And as someone who goes to the ceratory library every once a week, I think it's money well spent.
I did so much, it so is.
It's money well spent.
Uh. Well, I'll probably report it now, even though we're gonna announce it, but unfortunately, the uh. Uh, Campbell Library is a little bit behind schedule, so they were hoping to have a grand opening in November. It's probably not going to happen until January of twenty sixth now, so that was a little bit of time. That's, that's building for you. Okay, uh, so now we can go to. Council member comments. Yes, you had your hand up first.
Well, just on a personal nature, I, I think everybody knows, I will not be able to be at the meeting in two weeks because. Uh, Mary said, we need surgery that afternoon.
Okay, then we wish her, wish her well and.
Thank you, all all prayers and good wishes are greatly appreciated.
We'll do. Council member Shannon, any comments?
No, no comments for me.
Okay, have fun over there, any, are they, are they uh, going to sleep and uh, sleeping through the night yet?
After, after a week, no, not yet.
Ah, come on. Council member Torn, any comments?
Well, um, I had the pleasure along with the vice mayor and my wife Melissa to attend the. Police recognition lunch, which was very. Um, great, uh, with a lot of um, members of the police force receiving all kinds of service awards and. It was just a terrific event, um, I'm going to be um, attending the wildfire advisory group. Meeting on Thursday, I think it is.
Ten thirty this Thursday, I want to be attending that too, yeah.
And I attended the Silicon Valley Community Foundation annual meeting, which was really quite interesting, um. Great organization, it does a lot of, a lot of things. In the community and some of the people that I spoke to were, you know, surprised that I'm a council member, they didn't even. Didn't even know that, so that was kind of interesting. And then I'll be, Melissa and I will be attending the San Andreas Regional Center Service Above Self. Um, event on Saturday night, it's a great organization. I had the pleasure to join the mayor at the youth commission uh, meeting. Uh, last week?
Last week?
Yeah. Really great group, very impressed, uh, very, they take this stuff very seriously, talks about podcasts and. Uh, participation in the holiday parade and all kinds of things, so I was very impressed with that, I also met with John Tang. Who reached out to me, sends me water, you probably know him, VP of Regulatory Affairs in Government Relations, great guy, very knowledgeable. And I, you know, invited him to come and speak to us, I I assume he does that, so. Was really very impressed, there's a lot of interesting things about water in our community, so. I had the pleasure of doing those things.
Gotta go from the tap, Alex.
Yeah.
And the other one.
Right, thanks.
Okay, and um. My only comment was I ran into Jabit at Kirkburgers. And he had a chicken salad, but he's not eating meat right now, it's, it's probably. So it, the the recuperation is still going slowly and um, but it's steady. He's starting to feel better now, so he felt good enough that he was able to get out of the house. So it was great to see him and and spend a little bit of time with him. So. And that was, oh, yes, do I get to make comments? I'm sorry. Go ahead and make, and then your comment, can you?
Um, while you're putting that up, I did wanna say that um, there were two sessions that I felt were very interesting. At the um. Uh, League of California Cities, one was all about the Malibu fires. And hearing what was happening as it, as it occurred was was very enlightening, and then. The other was on the Public Records Act for requests, and it was kind of interesting. Um, but, uh, we, you talked about community involvement, this is a photo from Sunday afternoon. Uh, Via Sereno, the folks there, they set up a block party every, every year, once or twice. And there are sixteen homes on Via Sereno, and there are twelve of the sixteen represented there. And you'll see the gentleman that's right dead center, uh. That's uh, Ned Gault, and his wife passed a year and change ago, and she was over a hundred.
Wow.
And Ned is younger than her, but um, it was good that Ned was able to to come down and see us, so. So there is a little neighborhood involvement, and I was uh, saying that we need to get people to get out. And get involved in the city of Montes Reno, so I just wanted to share that with everyone, okay?
Okay. And uh, any additions to the quarterly city manager report?
Um, just one quick comment, um, I did email the council this earlier on this week, but just to make sure that everybody is aware that we will be issuing an RFP this week. Requesting consultant proposals to assist with potential ballot measure um, for police services, um. To cover police services costs, which would be on the November twenty twenty six general election. The proposals that will, that we receive will be evaluated by the ad hoc committee, which includes Mayor Craig and Councilmember Mekachak, as well as staff. And we have the goal to bring a contract for council's consideration before the end of this year.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'll just, um, say that um, there's a number of firms that are, that do polling and that sort of thing. And they were at the uh, in the exhibit booths, so.
I'm sure I've heard that lots of cities are putting tax measures down, I'm sure they're gonna be very busy over the next year or so. Okay, any future agenda items? Yes, anybody would like to suggest a future agenda item?
I thought at the last meeting, um. That we were gonna talk about maybe having non. Uh, elected officials be able to be on certain boards. If the boards do that, so I'm wondering if we could have that as an agenda item.
Yes, yep, we are planning to do that. Okay, any others? Uh, Councilmember Shannon? Any future agenda items you would like to see? Okay, then with that, I will adjourn our meeting, and don't forget to vote.